Okay, welcome to the November eighteenth regular meeting in town in Niqwa. First order of business is to approve the agenda. Be it resolved that we hereby approve the regular meeting agenda for November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Move by. Counselor Costin-Chuck seconded by Counselor Clark. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. You've all received the minutes. Be it resolved that we hereby approve the minutes of the annual organizational meeting, the public hearing, and the regular meeting held November fourth as circulated. Move by. Counselor Nardole seconded by Counselor Costin-Chuck. Any questions on the minutes? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. We'll start off with council reports. Counselor Costin-Chuck.
I just received the hand coordinator's report for October. There were four new installs for Lifeline. The fall team took place October sixteenth. Thank you to Viola Lepriquet for playing the harp and Judy Gayler for playing the piano. And also a big thank you to the board members for donating pies and to Val Wilson for her fourteen pies that she gave to the bake sale. And I just hope that whoever bought my lemon ring that they were good. That's the thing about making pies, you can't taste it pre-extended. The Elks exercise program, it's amazing attendance. They actually have to get more equipment because it's growing so much. And Michelle has volunteered again to help out with the Crown Mountain Health Flu and COVID Vaccine Clinics. The next one will be November twenty eighth.
Great, thanks, Mary. Okay, anyone else?
Just a quick, very quick one. From our recruitment and retention, we have doctors that are seeking Niqwa now as opposed to us doing all chasing. Can't tell you anymore.
Very refreshing, that's great.
Yeah. Great news, thanks, Mary.
And actually, if I can just add to that, the Family Doctor Finder has been completely cleared, which is fabulous.
Yeah. So anybody looking to find a doctor, simply need to go to the Find Doctor. Or whatever it is.
Family Doctor Finder.
Find the doctor finder.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Nardole.
Yeah, just to let council know that on November tenth, we had our local advisory committee. We had our meeting and our staff appreciation dinner and everyone that attended really had a good night. November thirteenth, we had our justice committee meeting and everything's rolling there pretty well. We had the proclamation approved at the last meeting and there was a nice article in The Banner just talking about anniversary that the Spruce Plains Justice Committee supported. So that was really nice.
Great, thanks, Jason. Counselor Gerard.
November twelfth, the White Mud Watershed met. Part of our two meetings a year we do for our sub-district. And this was to approve budgets and that review projects existing within the watershed. Productive year projects we're wrapping up according to plan. Probably the larger impact to the community ourselves. This is where we review what our annual bill of mill rate is to our community. Last year, we were invoiced point three five of a mill rate for White Mud Watershed. We will be going down to point three two. Probably not going to change our net dollars much because we saw a decrease of assessed value in the community. So probably similar dollars, but flat costs, which is the important part.
Any questions, girl? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll ask manager of operations, Diddy.
Thank you, Brad. A little quiet. We've had contractors working on Dominion Road. That'd be the new water and sewer extension to service the growth that's happening there. Unfortunately, our contractor's contacting this evening. My son, it will have to shut the water off tomorrow again for a quick repair. One of the fittings is leaking, so we'll do some notification in the morning to our residents that are affected there. Town staff tend to a Third Avenue sewer line repair for one of the homes there. They had some roots coming into their problem. Service service, so that was remedy. You may notice tonight we leave that the town staff started opening up Christmas lights. So I never check progress, see if they're all completed or not, but the most probably they are. And then some of you have seen a posting too that we had some garbage dumped off at our compost grounds. So it's a friendly reminder that residents do not have to go sneak around at night, throw garbage in dishes and in the back of the compost grounds and hide it. Evergreen Environmental is a short drive away. It's free to use as long as it's not C and D. Simply drive it there, look up their hours, they're open on the weekend. They said it's super easy to still use and to find. So I definitely encourage residents to please drive there instead of throwing it across. So all our repairs have to pay to have us clean it up.
Yeah, good comment. Okay, any questions? Counselor Gerard.
I know our compo site is a regular victim of that kind of abuse, whether it be construction materials or in the last case we saw mattresses and that. But construction materials that are common out there. Have we ever considered putting up cameras so we can review? I know our ability to enforce isn't great, but at least if we have something, way we can review.
So we do have trail grants that we periodically hide and put up, obviously because we don't want to promote it where they are. We rotate them around the community, different locations whenever we feel we're starting to get picked on. Let's see, there's some some dumping, some trespassings, or some thefts. So they may or may not be there.
Great.
Would be my advice. Like I said, we pop them up in different locations around sporadically. Further notices, like I said, we've discussed the closure of the compost grounds to certain materials. And again, I will say that we should, and I will be promoting this, that effective, you know, immediately, we've already contacted all our major contractors that they are not to dump any more concrete or asphalt there. We've provided them an alternate location because we have to pick this stuff and move it all over again. And we'll probably change some of our regulations as to tree dumping there as well. So any commercial contractors will have to alternate locations so that we didn't have to pick it up and move it again at a high burden cost. You've seen some of the checks you're signing to some of the different repairs of what it costs sixteen items up. So we'll say we'll try to see if we can nip it in the bud and keep the site a little bit cleaner.
Okay, thanks, Diddy. Just we'll move on to Colleen with correspondence.
Just the one thing tonight from the Minister of Environment and Climate Change. So please supervise the Niqwa has been approved for recycling rebate for January first to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five intake as part of the Waste Reduction and Recycling Support Program. So our allotment of money is twelve thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-four cents. Will be deposited into our account.
Okay. Any questions on that?
The more you recycle, the more we'll get.
Do you have a number, Colleen, as to what would have been previous year?
I didn't look that up.
I just wondered if you're on sort of the same.
No, it's very, very similar, give or take a few hundred.
Can I just add to that though?
Sure.
Make sure you put recyclable materials in there, otherwise it ends up in the dump.
Yes.
It's the quality of the recycling that matters.
We get a lot of rejections at Evergreen. So there might be seventy-five percent of people do it exactly how they should. If though, in the loan that goes to Evergreen, somebody has tossed in, you know, a can of corn that they haven't cleaned out or a stager foam or things that aren't recyclable, they will reject the whole load at Evergreen. And we don't have credit for that. So if you do not want to recycle properly, just please don't put it in the block one because it's costing us money.
Okay. Thanks, Colleen. Moving on to finance. High Life Assessment Appeal, Colleen.
So to give you a little bit of history on this, so we received more recently an order from the municipal board. Back in the two thousand and twenty-two year, at the date of board revision at that particular time, High Life appealed their assessment for rule ninety-three fifty out there. The appeal at that time was not necessarily about the whole High Life's construction and buildings out there. It was based on an incremental assessment they received by an addition that they completed at their building. So when they came to the board in two thousand and twenty-two, because High Life is so large and we're talking about analyzing assessment in the millions and millions of dollars, both the assessment branch and High Life felt in the time period they were allotted to bring information to the board that they could not bring sufficient information to for a board decision that particular night. So what was agreed upon after they presented was that they both agreed that if the board would confirm the assessment that was given by the assessment branch, then High Life would take it to the next level as it afforded under the Assessment Act and go and apply to the municipal board for an appeal. So they appealed in two thousand and twenty-three, early in two thousand and twenty-three. They have twenty-one days to do that. And we sat this whole period of time waiting on an answer from the municipal board. And every so much, I would write to the board or I would email them and ask them if there was an update because just in case it was an obligation such that the board had made a decision to reduce the assessment for understanding the evidence presented by High Life was sufficient enough to warrant a reduction. Anyway, so we finally received basically the board order. And what they're ordering is that the two thousand and twenty-three, just this year only, two thousand and twenty-three Realty Assessment for Rule Number ninety-three fifty in the town of Niqwa be revised to change the assessment by decreasing the assessed value basically from thirty-four million eighty thousand dollars to thirty-three million, three hundred and forty-three, three hundred for that particular reference year, which was a decrease of seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. So what that meant to the town in Niqwa is we now have to credit their role for that particular result out of the municipal board in amount of ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. Any questions? So it's nice to finally have this out of my pending file.
Okay, if there's no questions, resolution reads whereas December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, High Life Foods filed a notice of appeal to the municipal board for a review of their two thousand and twenty-three assessment related to property rule number nine-three-five-zero. And whereas a decision and order was issued by the municipal board October first, two thousand and twenty-five, providing that the two thousand and twenty-three Realty Assessment Rule for ninety-three fifty be revised to change the assessment by decreasing the assessed value of the buildings by seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars for that year. Therefore, be it resolved that the, based on the ruling of the municipal board, the town in Niqwa approve a supplementary deletion of Rule Number nine-three-five-zero in the amount of ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. Move by. Counselor Clark seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, you've all received your October financial statement to review. Be it resolved that we approve the financial statement for the month ended October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Move by. Counselor Gerard seconded by Counselor Nardole. Is there any questions on the statement? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Dutch elm tree, new business going.
Does you want to speak in here?
Sure. Or Diddy, I guess, yes.
Yes, a part of our annual, I think we have Dutch elm removal. So I contacted five contractors to submit some quotations for removal of the Dutch elm trees. We had one just was too busy, so he denied. Another one, same thing, could not complete in time, so he pulled out. I had two no comments and only one submitted a bid. So we have one bid for the removal of elms this year for Middleton Enterprises. Interesting fact about elm removals is that we have a provincial boundary line for elms in Niqwa and that boundary goes into North Cypress Langford. So we're removing trees in the RM at our cost.
So that number of thirty-five, is that higher, lower than other years?
It's a little bit higher.
Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe twenty-seven, twenty-eight, something like that.
But I noticed a few more red bands are out town, unfortunately.
Yeah, the furniture, we still have, basil spraying has been phased out now. The province is now no longer allowing us to use that chemical on the trees. So it's another preventative maintenance item that's no longer eligible. So we'll see if it works out.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Be it resolved that we accept the quote of Middleton Enterprises in the amount of thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars plus GST for the removal of thirty-five diseased elm trees identified as part of the Dutch elm disease management program for two thousand and twenty-five. Move by. Counselor Sisley seconded by. Counselor Costin-Chuck, all in favor? Opposed? Policies, Colleen.
So we have two policies looking for your approval tonight. The first one is Code of Conduct for Employees. This is not a new policy. It was first created in two thousand and ten. As you all know, when you look at Code of Conduct for council members, it was required to be established under bylaw. So what basically transpired was this policy was updated to reflect certain criteria that was contained in the council one, which was relevant to employees. And then just providing for some provision, excuse me, sorry. Whereby, we quite often in Niqwa, just because of our presence in Manitoba and the size and our activity, we have quite often have staff that participate on, you know, committees, for example, that are more of a provincial lead or more of a, you know, even a national lead. And we do support those, we have in all the years I've been here. So we just decided it was time probably to include some conversation in these policies that there is disclosure. And the idea being that so it's not impacting, you know, the activity that you need to complete for the town in Niqwa. So we don't find at this moment anybody is breaching this, but you know, if we don't set some policies in place, we really, it's really difficult to have a conversation if somebody gets outside the scope of that. That's all it is, just basically an update and bringing it to two thousand and twenty-five to reflect what goes on in the industry.
Okay, any questions?
Question on that? The second one is customer service standards policy. And this one has been kind of under discussion for several years. And it was time to put one in print. This was basically saying that we're going to provide service excellence to the visitors, the residents, anybody that would like to contact the town in Niqwa and talk to us about something or obtain information. So as much as we do our best to adhere to what already we do here is, you know, push forward into writing now, we're basically saying now to staff that we want you to read this. We want you to make sure you return all calls in a certain period of time. We want emails responded to. We want letters and everything written in a similar format to be, to reflect professionalism. So we have standards for our correspondence, standards for our phone house, standards for our digital communications, standards for our emails now. And I'm not saying we didn't have them. I would suggest there's lots of people in the community saying, oh, you didn't follow them or don't have them. We did. They are outlined in writing now and they basically address everything we think we should address. We even talk in here about unreasonable customer behavior because we shouldn't have to participate in behavior when the customers are coming in and treating us poorly and disrespectful because we also have a respectful workplace policy. And we speak as well about accessibility standards. We try to make sure that everybody that feels there's a barrier in place to be coming into the office and receiving services, that we remove those barriers and treat them equally as important to everybody else. So unless there's questions, those are the two policies tonight.
Okay, seeing none, be it resolved that we approve the updated amendment to Policy AD dash zero-one-zero, respecting of Code Conduct for Employees, and approve Policy AD zero-one-two to establish customer service standards. Move by. Counselor Gerard seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Medical clinic.
Well, this is an annual resolution and this is necessary based on the fact that we all know there is a lottery run every year to raise money for the group that does significant upgrades to the community clinic. So this is just the resolution saying that as they apply for their license, the province requires some credibility behind the application to say that if for some reason a financial commitment needs to be had, there is an agreement between the partnering municipalities to cover those costs.
Any questions? Whereas Niqwa and District Medical Committee is represented by the municipal jurisdictions of Niqwa, Glen Allen, Landstone, North Cypress, Langford, and Rosedale will be filing an application to obtain a charitable gaming license as part of their annual fundraising efforts in two thousand and twenty-six, the revenues of which will be used to sustain and improve health services for the community and surrounding area. Therefore, be it resolved that, based on the contribution sharing agreement, council of the town of Niqwa agreed to financially support the committee in their efforts to secure a license and raise money for the Niqwa and District Medical Committee in two thousand and twenty-six. Move by Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Counselor Sisley. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Two thirty-seven, First Avenue.
Okay, so there's a property at two thirty-seven, First Avenue, is lot fourteen, plant seven-six-five, roll one-six-one, two thousand, in the town of Niqwa where there currently sits a Jero building. It is currently disconnected from water and hydro services. Over a period of years now, we've been trying to actively work with the owners of that property and then midstream a new owner of that property to either bring that property into compliance or have them remove it and build something new. The difficulty with this particular property is it has a twenty-five foot front which firstly doesn't meet our zoning bylaw requirements. And it had come forward for a variance at one point to vary that and it was rejected by council based on various parameters and what the owner at that time was trying to achieve for this particular property. As time passed, it was very clearly understood that the basement under this property was not structurally sound. So the possibility of basically renovating that structure existed, but the property owner had to come forward with a structural engineer plan to show what they were going to do. And of course, attend our planning district to outline a schedule for doing that. So more recently in two thousand and twenty-five, we got a little more serious about this property sitting there in the manner it is because we all know as things sit, you welcome rodents, you welcome more decay and you welcome the opportunity for people to, you know, enter buildings and cause damage or otherwise and for safety concerns. So looking more recently into two thousand and twenty-five, we actually issued particular notices to move forward with this property either by getting that plan in place or, you know, showing some progress of some sort. Nothing happened, nothing happened. So as of July twenty-fifth, we actually issued an order to comply now, meaning if you can't get the plan in place and show us what you want to do, we're ordering you to demolish the building. So we let time lapse again because the owners once again, in good faith, were wanting to do something. And then they were also seeking information for how and who they would get to demolish the building. And of course, the months are now ticking by. After an expiration of the property on November thirteenth, revealing that the dwelling remains in a dilapidated condition with visible signs of structural failure, it's becoming now a danger to the public. And under our property standard, it's not the building code regulations, this building technically needs to come down. So we're asking your support. We have been ordered by the planning district, who in effect, under the planning authorities, is the one that implements these things for us. They're transferring that responsibility now under the property standard bylaws back to the town of Niqwa to proceed and get the demolition completed on this property. So we're asking for your support.
Okay, whereas residential structure at two thirty-seven, First Avenue is structurally unsound and does not meet building and occupancy standards, whereas the town of Niqwa and Niqwa and Area Planning District have been actively working with the property owner to outline a course of action to bring the residential structure into compliance with property standard, bylaw three-one-six-six dash one-six in the building code. Whereas the property owner's failure to make any progress with this matter resulted in the issuance of an order to comply on July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, whereby the property owner was required to demolish the structure and level the lot by July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas an inspection of the property on November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five revealed the dwelling remains in dilapidated condition with visible signs of structural failure is increasingly becoming a danger to the public. Therefore, be it resolved that acting on the order issued by Niqwa and Area Planning District dated November thirteenth, twenty-five, under the authorities of the Planning Act, the Municipal Act of Property Standards, bylaw three-one-six-six dash one-six, the Council for the Town of Niqwa Direct Administration to proceed with demolition of the dwelling at two thirty-seven, First Avenue and the leveling of the lot with all costs to be borne by the property owner and collected in the same manner as tax may be collected. Move by. Counselor Clark seconded by. Counselor Costin-Chuck, all in favor? Opposed? Organizational bylaw?
So this is bylaw three-one-three-six dash twenty-five. And this is to replace a bylaw that was passed in two thousand and ten, eighteen, number three-one-eight-six. And the idea of this particular bylaw is just to make one small amendment and it might be a big amendment when you hear what it is. At our annual organizational meeting, at the first meeting in November, council has the opportunity to review their organizational procedure bylaw. At that time, there was a discussion regarding Article four-point-seven-one within the bylaw. So what they talked about, that particular article says that the regular meeting of council shall start at seven PM on the first and third Tuesdays of every month. And the amendment now reads that the regular meeting of council shall now start at five-thirty PM on the first and third Tuesday of each month. And once passed, this bylaw will take effect for the first council meeting in January of twenty-six.
Okay, questions? Be it resolved that bylaw number three-two-three-six dash two-five be in a bylaw of the town of Niqwa to govern now organization of the town of Niqwa and the committees therefore to regulate the proceedings and conduct of the council and committees therefore be now read for the first time. Move by. Deputy Mayor Parrott seconded by Counselor Nardole. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. And for other business, community events, Counselor Sisley, anything?
Counselor Parrott has another. It's the posture research.
So there's a community. What do you want to call us?
Glorious Christmas Wish Sale.
Glorious Christmas Wish Sale. So that's this Saturday?
No, Saturday, November twenty-ninth.
No, twenty, November twenty-ninth. Next Saturday. At the Yellhead.
And it's the start of Super Saturday.
Continue, Counselor Sisley.
What else have we got for our month?
So it's the start of Super Saturday and at the craft sale, there is going to be Super Saturday coupon books handed out, which are free to any of the attendees. And there is multiple events going on on Saturday. There is the, of course, it ends with the Chambers Parade of Lights, but Kimberly Thompson does a free movie at the Roxy at two PM. There's many organizations and businesses doing stuff. A lot are involved with the coupon books, so people can get some great deals to start their Christmas shopping and it's just a kickoff to the holiday season. So we're really hoping that we can get tons of people through Niqwa and staying in Niqwa and checking out everything all the businesses have to offer.
Plus the Chambers Parade of Lights at six o'clock. All right, thank you.
It's clearly going to be.
I was wondering why I was the only one to drop that.
All righty. Okay, anything else? Seeing nothing? Be it resolved, the council of the town of Niqwa to now adjourn this meeting at seven-twenty-eight PM. PM. Move by. Counselor Costin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor? Opposed? Carry.